Lease purchase agreement. And the reason we put it on the work session is that it's on the agenda for a vote on the approval of the lease purchase agreement and the intergovernmental agreement. But I thought it was only fair that we have a chance to discuss it ahead of time. So the lease purchase agreement was included in your packet. It's been added. Mark had some reservations about it. The county are happy with it. He's kind of said, "Well, I can go along with it." Nothing in there is critical. It's a deal breaker. But he did have some issues with the intergovernmental agreement that I drafted, which should come as no surprise to anyone. And so the intergovernmental agreement that was included in your packet is being substituted by this intergovernmental agreement, which has been revised in consultation with Ivan Schrader, county attorney, and his client, county. So we believe this is in a form that's acceptable and is consistent with our obligations to comply with the constitution of the state of Missouri and the state statutes. So I don't have much detail to talk about. It's a lot of pages, but the basic terms are the terms that we agreed upon. Twenty-year amortization alone at 3.9, 2.5 percent for the first five years, 5% for the next five-year period, and it kind of has a balloon at the end of 10 years, at which point you'd negotiate any rates beyond that, or you'd refinance it, or you'd do something else. So other than that, it's more just details of who does what to whom. County's going to make the payments until 2025. Then we take over after our certificates of participation are paid off. Any questions?
There's no repayment for anything that they've paid up until...
I have asked for two readings. I would like to ask for two readings tonight because we've already incurred three months of bills and just sitting on them, waiting to get this going.
Question for Mark and Stacey. Have you ever heard of an agreement like this before?
Yes. Well, which one are you talking about? The lease purchase or the intergovernmental agreement?
The intergovernmental.
The intergovernmental agreement is exactly... There's no issues with that one at all whatsoever in present form. And we do intergovernmental agreements all the time between different public entities, so I don't have any concerns about that. It incorporates the lease purchase agreement into it. Basically, the intergovernmental agreement is just who's paying what when pursuant to the lease purchase agreement, and then what happens if... Because they're paying first, meaning the county's paying first through 2025. And then after that, then we're paying the lease purchase payments. And so they wanted some sort of language in there of what happens if we say we're not paying. Well, because they're... Both the city and the county are obligated under the lease purchase agreement to make the payments independently of each other, so it's a joint obligation. And so we have the intergovernmental agreement that spells out that if we don't pay, they're going to have to pay, but then they can get a judgment against us for not paying, for whatever they have to pay. So it protects them in that respect and spells out, you know, the timeline for the payments because the lease purchase agreement is silent, pretty much is silent as to which one of us is paying when, if that makes sense, because we're both obligated to pay.
Do we have that reciprocal agreement if they decide not to pay?
Well, no, because they're paying first. So if they fail to pay, then the asset is ours, essentially. So they wanted some protection after they've made all these payments. The asset's ours, and we're using it to provide the water service. So there's not really the need to have that reciprocity because they're paying first. We're not paying the payments until 2026. So they're going to have all their money out before we're going to have to pay anything on it. So that's why they wanted some sort of arrangement that they can get a judgment against us if we decide not to pay.
What happens if two years from now, they don't have any money and they decide they're not going to make the payments?
That's going to be a problem. That's going to be a problem.
Do we need some kind of protection for that?
Well, you know, that would be an issue. They are still jointly liable to make the payments under the lease purchase agreement. So in essence, the protection that they get from the intergovernmental agreement is in addition to what is already in the lease purchase agreement. Both of us are obligated to pay those payments throughout the entire lease purchase agreement. So even absent the intergovernmental agreement, I think we can still file a cause of action against them as a co lesser, basically as a cross claim between, because we're both leasing the property. So there's some protection there. I think it's... I would expect to be highly unlikely because at that point, I'm assuming the water park will be built.
Yeah.
And the water tower will be built, and then if they default on it, they're not going to have any water for the water park. So I think the risk of that is acceptable to the city. And under all circumstances, whatever payments they make is really a payment for the city to have a permanent asset in that area. So they're contributing to... Whatever they contribute towards the construction is a direct benefit to the residents in the city, the taxpayers in the city, because we're going to have that asset for as long as it is still operational.
I agree. I think this is a good deal for us. We're getting something we need to consider that less than the cost to do it on ourselves.
Right.
And they're paying half of it, so...
Right. Well, and that's why I'm hoping that they follow through with...
Right.
Because, you know, sometimes people...
Well, then there's risk in everything, so, you know, so we're just...
Paul, you're saying they're paying half of it. Why are they getting by 3.95 for the first five years, and then after that, we're paying 5.5? We couldn't negotiate that to where they wouldn't lock in for 10 years at 3.95?
The bank would guarantee 3.5 for five years, but they can't see the future, you know? And so actually, that was only going to be 3.5, and then it was going to be whatever it was. And we got them to give us the commitment to the 5% for the next five-year period. I don't think that they could say in five years they would be willing to charge 3.5.
That's a typical bank, you know, agreement.
So that is balanced due in ten years?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, it goes to a balloon though.
Right. Goes to a balloon for five years, which we then renegotiate.
Right.
But we have a whole balance?
In 10 years. Well, you renegotiate the rate, or you pay it off. And actually, there's been some talk about not even waiting to refinance it, but...
Pay it off, you know? It's an option we'll have, you know?
Yeah. At the end of 10 years, you either have to reach the agreement with them on the rate. The terms of the agreement will survive. It's just the rate would differ.
But then that's all on the city, not half the county?
Right.
So the county's paying the interest for us?
The county's paying principal and interest.
Right. But in the beginning of the loan...
Until 2025.
Right. The amortization of the loan, the first five years of almost all the interest.
Yeah, pretty much, yeah.
So we're going to have a balloon payment due in 10?
Yes.
Do we know how much it's going to be?
Well, I do have the amortization, and I haven't looked at it to see what it is in 10 years.
I mean, what the construction costs to be the water park?
Yes. That's on the agenda for tonight.
Yeah.
And what we have is an amortization of $1 million, but we're only going to spend what we need to spend, and the bid we have is 800 and something. And so even with the extra costs of things that we need to do, like bring the water line up to it and all of that, it'll be under the $1 million.
We don't know what those costs are, do we?
Well, no.
But it'll be under the budget.
Oh, yeah. Because we're going to do it with our own forces, so...
So basically, we can do it under this agreement, or we can do it all on our own?
Or not.
Easy answer.
Well, the group decided to move forward with this, you know, early on in this, so it's no surprise. So our word's out there, and we've agreed on it, and I think we go forward. It's my take on it. We've discussed this at length. Not everybody's in a... But this board was in total agreement of it, if I remember right, so...
Okay. Next item? Law enforcement tax.
Right. Tax. I will defer to Mark for a lot of this. I got, and I think I included an email that I got from him that kind of spells out our options for this. And I guess what I was just wanting to know from the board is how you guys would want us to proceed with preparing these documents as far as your feeling for sales tax versus property tax and what our options are there. My understanding is we're... And according to the email, on the top end of what we are allowed to collect for sales tax, but there are some variances that could still pertain that would get us within that 2% that we're allowed to impose for the sales tax in the city. I know there's a couple of philosophies, one of which being property tax might be a hard sell for brick and mortar, unless it's a brick and mortar type investment where it would have some sunset, versus the sales tax, which, you know, again, arguably may be more appropriate as far as the project that we're hoping to put on the ballot. So I just... I know there's some differing opinions that maybe the sales tax, you know, since it's already on the higher end for us, might not be the best sell. So like I said before, we've put a whole lot of work or effort into researching this or getting the documentation done. We wanted to make sure that we had the field of the board for what, your opinions and your...
You're going to have to talk about this. Any estimates that would be generated, any given tax increase?
We have. Let me see. We looked at the half cents... The money that we would need to raise for the half cents sales tax or what the difference would be. Just did some comparisons as far as what that would bring in. If we're correct, and Jason, we would look at about 200... A $178,000 difference between what we currently budget and what we would anticipate or would like to propose for the salaries for the officers. And we thought that we were there with the half cent sales tax, I believe.
I support finding ways to get you additional funding. I think a sales tax for me, to ask the people of St. Genevieve to pay a higher yet even sales tax than we already have, one of the highest ones in the state, that's a tough ask for me to pursue.
Do you think it's the kind of issue people are going to either support or not support regardless of what you choose, what you ask for, or do you think that, as Eric suggested...
I think there's a pop...
Sales taxes are more palatable to them than property tax?
There's definitely a population of people that are very staunchly supportive of the police and the police protection and our first responders and things like that. I think there's a lot of people that make that kind of a banner issue for them, and they might not care either way which form that support comes in. But for me, and having talked to some merchants around who complain about the level of sales tax they're having to collect already, I think a sales tax is a tough sell for people.
Well, I agree, and I think that a property tax is going to be a hard sell, especially for our senior residents. I mean, everybody's on a fixed income.
Well, and particularly with, you know, the county just doing this reassessment now where everybody's is going to go up.
Who knows how much?
Who knows how much, you know? And I'm with John. I want to publicly say, "I support you guys. I want to see you get paid, you know, commensurate level with what your counterparts are elsewhere." But this is... You know, I feel it's a tough sell, but, you know, either way, I don't know. I don't know. I wish there was a way we could figure out to do it, a way to do it without adding to anybody's tax burden. And I have no idea what that might be, but...
Our sales tax is... I don't know the exact relations to where it is in the state, but I've heard like third highest. I've heard people say in the state.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's accurate or not, but I know it's high.
Right.
Do we have... You know, it lists our property tax as 0.7316 per 100 assessed evaluation. What is that in comparison to surrounding communities?
That's the total property tax burden, not the city.
Right. That's the city and county together.
Well, I mean, that's what a person's going to have to pay.
The ambulance district and the hospital.
Right. I mean, the people don't say, "Well, this goes to the county, this goes to the city." They say, "This is my money that goes out."
No. They go, "I got to write a check for that."
So how does... What the residents of St. Genevieve, what is their total property tax assessment compared to surrounding communities? Are we way more than what they would pay if they lived in Farmington? Are we more than what they would pay if they lived in Park Hills?
Jefferson County or...
Or is there... I mean, if we're, you know...
You're talking about your total...
Sure.
For a $100,000 house, how does our tax bill compare to similarly valued house in Jefferson County?
Right. Or St. Francis County or...
Perry County.
Perry County, yeah.
I don't...
Can I add something?
Yes, sir.
So Eric, you mentioned about how the property tax would affect the elderly who are on fixed incomes, and everyone's on fixed income, of course. However, I want to point out that sales taxes disproportionately affect the poor in a percentage of what they have to spend to live. Keep in mind, if you're not a property owner, you don't pay property tax. It's paid somewhat through rent, but then rent is also somewhat controlled through what the market can bear. So if you do studies on what taxes actually affect people, they affect the poor and the elderly much more. Sales taxes much more by a percentage of their income because those people spend a larger percentage of their income on needs that they have to live. But if you add a property tax, property taxes are better distributed amongst wealth than income taxes are, or I'm sorry, than sales taxes are. So if you have a lot of property, you have a larger bill. Personally, I would rather see, even though it would disproportionately affect me, a property tax to support the police than a sales tax.
Thank you.
I have to agree with John and Randy also on stuff as collecting sales tax and collecting it more than one county. Our sales tax here is... I have to feel it's maxed out. The one question I do have in stuff is we pass different additional sales taxes. A couple of the earlier ones I don't agree with. Is there no possibility of ever changing that?
I would...
I have to look at those assets of those two entities. You know, they have the ability to generate income. They have billable people that they work for that they generate income. Our police department doesn't, or if it isn't, it isn't much. Our fire department doesn't.
I think the answer to your question is probably best to look at Mark, but yes.
Well, you're talking about the levies, as far as the other levies that you have? The property tax levies? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah. No. Sales tax. Other sales tax increases that we've implicated, do we not ever have the ability to change those?
Well, yes. I mean, you don't have to have an election for that. The election just authorizes you to have the tax. You can zero that out if you wanted to. By order.
No. He's talking about a tax, not a municipal tax.
Oh, you can't do anything about that.
Well, except you could organize a petition, you know, and request the county put it to a vote to resent it, couldn't you?
Well, the county wouldn't need to put it to a vote. They can set their taxes or levies at zero if they want to. The vote just authorize... You need a vote to authorize the tax. Your elected officials can just decide we aren't going to collect it. They just have to pass an order and say, "We're not going to enforce the sales tax." But they're not going to do it.
I don't want all of it. I just want some of it.
Is the sales tax... Is it itemized? Is it specific the sales tax has to go for this?
Well, it depends on the sales tax. So the city has, I think, three sales tax. One's for general revenue, could be for anything. There's capital improvement sales tax, and there's a transportation tax. So those are specific funds that have to be used for those purposes.
And they're counter-ordered for that, are they?
Right.
The money that goes into transportation only gets spent on transportation.
So we couldn't, as a board, say, "Let's reduce the amount that's going towards transportation and take some of that tax and put it towards the police"? That wouldn't be...
Correct. Because it has to be for the transportation, right? You can decide to... I'm not suggesting this, but you say, "We're going to lay off all our public work people. We're going to give the police department all the money because it's all part of general revenue." You know, so you can allocate your resources differently, but you can't change the purpose for which the taxes, the ones that have been specifically authorized for those purposes, have been enacted. But if you're looking for other public entities to reduce the tax rates, it'd be like the county coming to you and saying, "Hey, why don't you lower your taxes so we can increase our taxes?" And you just have to give less services for your people.
But the cap that we're talking about, that we pump it up against, isn't the overall tax cap. It's the municipal sales tax limit.
Right.
The amount that the city is allowed to...
Right.
The problem, we've been dealt these cards by other entities around us and stuff, and they pass these propositions to increase their, you know, forces pay and stuff, and now we're here forced to do that, basically, because we need to keep our officers at a reasonable...
Is there any way to pass like a partial sales and a partial property to get the whole amount that we are looking for?
Well, you can have... You'd have to have a separate code on each valid issue, and so you can ask for a lesser amount, you know, and do your own calculations, say, "We'll do some sales tax and some property taxes if you're under limits."
But you're still looking at a tax increase.
Right. Which right now, we don't know what the property tax is going to go to.
No, we don't.
That's the other...
Has the notice gone out?
You don't know what the assessment is going to go to. You know what the percentage is.
Right. Assessments are out.
Yeah, they should be out.
It's not going to go down.
Yeah. That's for sure.
I've heard some rumblings.
Right. It's an 11.
Have we got any notice? They don't have to send... Isn't there a provision they don't have to send out notices to be increased? It's a certain percentage.
I can give you...
On a quick glance, it looks like St. Francis County is at 0.75, I'm assuming, for under assessed.
And where are we?
0.7316.
0.736.
To me, as a property owner and a person that buys stuff in St. Genevieve, a property tax increase is more palatable to me than a sales tax increase.
Well, I kind of agree with the comment that, you know, the more you have, the more you pay. That's... But the problem is, we don't know what we're going to be paying, other than we're going to be paying more.
Right.
Period.
Well, I think we're going to have a hard time making that 4,500 population. 2016, we were 44, 47 with all the deaths there, and I know there's been some births, but I don't...
Does jail population count into the census?
You could add that number a little bit, I guess.
Because they've done a couple of increases on the jail census.
This 2% number, not knowing how that's all spent, other than, I guess, it goes into the general revenue, I mean, is there some opportunities in there, other than you have to make departmental cuts or...
Yeah, that's at budget time, that would be, I think.
Slicing the pie differently.
And...
Which probably needs to happen.
I...
And the population requirement on that for the 45 was just one of the options for the sales tax.
I understand that.
Yeah. So it wouldn't affect the property tax levy.
Yes, sir.
Well, I don't think you have the answer, but how much are we roughly spending a year or in the last year on training, like the probationary training periods? That hasn't been working out.
Well, it's a hard number to factor. I mean, we're paying the officer that we would already be paying to patrol the streets. He's patrolling with another person. Really, the last few hires that we've had, we've not invested a tremendous amount because we've had property, the uniforms and supplies that we've been able to utilize for them. So essentially, their salary, the trainee's salary for the length of time that they're here, so...
There's a turnover cost, I think is what he's getting at. How much do we save if we reduce turnover? We got to save something.
Correct.
We're bleeding a little bit of money out just by turnover, and I mean, it's not going to get any better if we don't do something. How much money are we looking to raise?
It's that $180,000 thing.
I'm sorry?
I thought you said it was 180.
Yeah, 178, 180, which would put the patrolmen starting at almost $41,000.
Compared to...
$30,000 now.
How much?
$30,000-ish.
That's a pretty big increase.
Do we know what we collected in property taxes last year?
I'm sorry?
Do we know what we collected in property taxes last year?
Yes, but I don't have it on top of my head, but I can get it pretty quickly.
I mean, you could pretty easily run some numbers to see what percentage property tax increase would get to that, assuming that the assessments went to 20% over. I mean, if you wrote some numbers out, you could probably get something close.
And is that $11,000? Is that across the board per...
That would be... That would be not adjusting, I believe, my salary and the lieutenant's salary. So that would be the patrol officers, which would be about a $10,000, $11,000 pay raise across the board for the patrol officers.
Which is not a amount of pay.
Eight patrol officers, one detective, and then... And then that's still... That's about the starting salary at the sheriff's department right now for the hiring.
But we're talking about a 27% increase.
Are the closest people like Jefferson County where they're starting at what?
Jefferson County just published the effects of their tax increase, and it was remarkable.
$10,000 for the patrol.
Is it a... Is it a sales tax?
No.
A property tax?
Property tax.
The light is...
I think they're starting at 50, 55.
50 and something. The sheriff's salary can't be increased because it's fixed by statutes, though the assistant sheriff is now making $107,000 or something. Sheriff's making 85.
It's hard to get there in one...
Yeah, yeah, it is. I mean, you know, it's a population... They have 200,000 people paying taxes, not 4,400 people.
So 10 or 11,000 for nine officers? Is that what you were talking about?
Yes.
So that's like $90,000, $100,000. You're looking for 180. What's the other 80?
There would be... Again, there's some increase for the patrol or for the corporal and sergeant that are factored into that, nine people. That would be bringing... First, it would include some step increase for the officers with a max of 10 years. That would make up some of that, so that will end up being... That would put the patrolmen maxing out at 52,000 after 10 years, where Jeff... Again, it's hard to compare Jeff to, like he said, the residents certainly outnumber ours, but even, I mean, the sheriff's department now is still $6, $7 an hour higher than we're starting. But even, I mean, the Sheriff's Department now is still six dollars, seven dollars an hour higher than we're starting with their patrolman. I know, uh, Potosie just passed a bond issue. Ruttertown is, is asking for, for a bond issue. Jefferson County, St. Louis County, of course, just passed one.
There you go.
I believe they're talking about, about it, but I've not heard.
How did, did they do sales tax, or did they do property tax?
I believe Potosie's was a sales tax.
Was that countywide?
Yes.
You talked about two hundred thousand population compared to forty-five hundred. Two hundred thousand got to be, is got to be the entire county.
It is the entire.
It is the entire county.
But that, but it was a countywide tax increase.
So, we have, what, nineteen thousand?
In, in the county.
But we can only do the city stuff.
Yeah, but this, this is only.
I mean, I think a fair comparison is, is comparable municipalities.
Right.
Because we can't compete with Jefferson County Sheriff's Office.
Correct.
Now, does that mean that our guys won't find their way to Jefferson County if paying benefits are, are better? Yeah, probably, but.
So, anything that we decide today is basically, we're going to be deciding what would be put on the ballot for the voters.
What you think is the most appropriate thing for us to pursue.
So, ultimately, in the end, the voters will have a say as to whether they want to do it or not.
Correct.
Okay. Well, I don't know.
Well, I'm, I'm on the property tax side of things.
And I'm sorry I'm not. I resent being viewed as a bottomless pit. And that's how I feel as a property owner, I've faced it my whole life. It's always, always just another, always just another little bit, just another little bit.
Having lived, having lived in other counties and other places, I am amazed at how little property taxes I pay in St. Genevieve compared to when I lived in St. Louis.
That's in the city.
Right, sure.
But you still have to pay the whole bill, which includes what the county.
Right.
Right. And I don't think that's small.
It's, it's, it's smaller than other places I've lived.
Well, not me.
You must have a lot more property than I.
Got rid of something.
I just, I, I think we're, we are sales taxed to the teeth in this town. And I think people, there, there's a significant people who go out of their way to not shop in St. Genevieve because of that.
Well, I don't know, I think there's other reasons that people.
Well, I mean.
That's not even, that's not even a talk.
Yeah, I mean, it, it doesn't.
It probably, it probably factors in.
It, it, it hurts that there's considerably less things to buy in St. Genevieve than some other places. But, you know, I, I already, every time I go to Country Mart, I always feel like I'm paying a whole lot more. And part of that is sales tax.
Part of it.
Part of it.
Well, but it, I brought up to Randy a while ago, and so, if you walk into a, any place in town and buy something, if you go in and you buy a thirty or forty dollar item, fifty dollar item, the sales tax is never looked at. Walk into one of the establishments and buy a thirty or forty thousand dollar item, it's a major issue and getting bigger.
Jefferson County's property tax rate is point nine percent. Jackson County's is one point three nine percent.
Which county?
Jackson.
That would be Kansas City.
Down towards there.
Yeah. Not, not, city, Jackson County is Kansas City.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, dude, all right.
So, I have a question, uh, how many, you know, Eric, the chief's got some valid issues with, with what he's going, but he has some other issues going on with all of the other departments and how that's going to affect, you know, what the other departments are going to be facing. We talked about this a long time ago, about doing a comprehensive plan and how that's going to fit in. I know tonight, I might have missed it, I don't know if you guys were talking about the water tower issue or not, another million dollar project. So, I was just kind of curious if there was some discussion about the bigger picture of how this fits in, because there's some other needs, you know, the national park coming into town. Are they going to somehow come to us and start asking questions about funding for tourism type activities? I know the street department should, should definitely be pounding on your guys' door to start working on some improvement projects there. So, in the bigger picture, I don't know if you guys have talked a little bit about this, because from a sales tax point of view, you can go higher, but I mean, really, do you want to get hit ten percent here anytime soon? I mean, we're, we're at that point. Our, our property taxes are really low. I don't like paying them any more than you do. I've got a bunch of my own properties and, and I get assessed on them and it's, you know, you go down the Linda and you want to, you know, pull your hair out or, uh, what have you got left? And so, I, I just, I, I wonder where we're at with that long-term plan, that comprehensive plan, and how this all fits in, because I think Eric has some legitimate concerns, and I think he's up against the wall with some of these things with the way he's had his staff now. He's, he can't be competitive with his staff now. So, are we, are we pushing him now to, to find out if there's different ways to staff it? Or how does this fit in with where we're going and where we're growing? Instead of just putting out this fire, have we, have we gotten anywhere with the comprehensive plan?
Well, I don't think anybody would dispute the need for what Eric's talking about. I certainly wouldn't. I have absolutely no problem with it. I, I want to see him paid a fair, you know, wage for, for what, for the service, you know, and why and others. I just, I don't know.
So, when, when Gary Roth comes to you and says, I've got the same issue with my department, or the parks company and says, when the staff comes, I mean, I, I just wonder, have we done the comprehensive plan? Have we, have we moved any further on that, talking about this big picture of where we're at?
Comprehensive plan is a land use plan. It really would not be addressing these issues.
Also economic development, and some of the zoning and some of the, uh, city limits. So, I mean, it goes into more than just, uh, just lands.
Well, zoning and city limits are land use issues, but, yeah.
You made a comment just a minute ago, where we're going and where we're growing. That's the problem, we're not growing. You know, there is no increase in sales tax. I mean, we're holding our own, correct?
Well, actually, we're doing better than other comparable communities in the economy, in the current, current economy. But we're not, you know, there's no significant growth here, but we have been increasing as opposed to decreasing. And it's now, you know, it's, it's stable. And other, there are communities all over the state that cannot say that.
Well, and, and to the comprehensive plan, I mean, how many years has that industrial park been out there?
Twenty.
We're waiting.
Well, that's why we're.
It's huge.
Well, we're, we're looking at that.
Huge, period.
It's huge.
Yeah. Well, that's where all the growth, that's where it's growing out there. And that's why, on the table, we, we, this board looked at and approved, looking at building houses out there, you know? And, and that's the place we're going to grow, you know? And, and, and that's, and I agree with Joe, you know? We can't look, this town, we can't look just past our noses. When I first got elected, Steve, they come in and evaluated that this town has been flatlined for thirty years, and they projected the flatline for another thirty years. We're, we're not going to, there's not a lot of growth, you know? And as far as services, it's like any other service, is, Randy, with, if, if, if I live in the city and I want to be protected by the police, well, I'm a taxpayer and I got to pay for that protection. And, and that's, and with all of it, and, and I, I agree with the sales tax. A sales tax is off, it should be off the table, it's too high. But property tax, I think we, that's the way to go, if we, if we're really serious about it. If we feel a need to keep police and keep them at a, a, a pay rate that we can retain them, because it's, it's expensive when you have turnover, it takes a lot of time. So, I think you just put it to the voters. And if, they're going to decide anyway. And then, you're going to have an opportunity to, to decide.
Well, there you go.
You know, so, and so be it, let the, let the people, let the people decide. I, I don't know what the big issue is. It's just, I know I don't like to pay taxes, but I, I do like to, I, I love to be able on three forty-eight Academy, sleep at night, and I, I can do that. And, and I, I don't mind paying for good service. Y'all do it every time you go. You go to a restaurant, you get good service, you pay for it, you know? Same way in the city, you have to pay for services, you know? And we have a lot of issues on the streets. It's because we haven't had money because of that flatline to fix anything, you know? And the only way where that's going to happen is, is somebody dumps a bunch of money in our lap, or the, the people of this town have enough and say, hey, we're going to pay to fix our streets. And that, and that's where it's going to come from. So, and that's the issue we have. And as far as growth, we're seeing some growth out there at Progress Parkway, and we need to push it. It's, and we need to move forward, you know?
Well, I agree with you there.
Shouldn't have had to deal with this water tire, but we have to deal with it because somebody didn't, couldn't see it.
You got kicked down the road.
It kicked, kicked the can down the road, so, you know, but it's a need that needs to be out there, you know, so.
My favorite water tire up there, which probably would have been.
Well, I, I think the board, what, what, what I understand is Eric's wanting to know which way we go forward. Do we, we go forward, we, does he proceed, proceed with the sales tax or the property? Sounds to me like the consensus of this board is to go with the property tax. And I think we should proceed that way and, and come up with some good, solid figures, what that's going to cost, and get it out and, and let the people weigh in on it, let the people talk about it, and give them, give it an opportunity to speak, you know, and be heard. And it'll be heard in an election. And then, if they decide no, then this group will have to, will figure something else out.
Would this go on the August ballot?
No, it would be November.
November?
I would assume you'd do it in April.
Oh, April.
That's all I would assume, because you have, I mean, you could do it in November, but you'd have additional costs associated with that. You're having an election in April anyway, not to put on the April ballot, you have plenty of time to prepare, but.
I think we do that. I think you give the people time and have an opportunity for some town hall meetings. And, and one thing has got to happen, if, if this board has got to support it. If the board comes out, if the board's not going to support it and levy against it, then, then it's, we're all, it's going to be divided and it's going to cost.
With there being a general election, what would be the extra expenses?
Right. April is the municipal, like.
Yeah, they, they, they assess it, I mean, I, I assume they assess it the same way here, is they assess the cost of the election in Jefferson County, and they apportion that by the public entities that have elections. You don't have an election on the ballot in November, so you'll be incurring some portion of that election cost if you put it on, on November ballot. Where you already have an election presumably on your April ballot, so this wouldn't really increase the cost that you're going to be assessed by your election authority for that election. All right, thank you.
You know, one question comes to mind and stuff, you know, thinking about sales tax and stuff. Because property tax should be spread evenly based on your assessment and stuff. But, you know, looking at sales tax, you know, what, the amount of sales tax dollars that are collected within the city limits in St. Genevieve, and what's collected outside the city limits. I mean, are all of those tax dollars going appropriately or proportionately?
Well, uh, whether you live in the city or the county, if you buy a pound of apples, the tax goes to the authority that instituted it. And the fact that you live in the city and bought a pound of apples doesn't mean any of the dollars the county collected because the city resident bought the apples flows back to the city. So, no, we don't get, we don't see any of it, we only get.
I believe the answer to your question is no.
Yeah.
Well, theoretically, it's hard to measure, because you've got a ton of county residents coming into the city to do their shopping.
Yeah, there's a lot more people in the county than the city.
A lot of people come to the county and.
And they come shopping in St. Genevieve.
They come to dinner downtown and eat downtown.
Geographically, certain areas go to different places.
Right, I mean, you're, you're, part of us are closer to Farmington, or?
But it's not only the city residents that are buying in town, it's.
Right.
A good mixture.
I just think about those separate sales tax issues that were for separate entities. That's the part of this. I, I can't understand.
Well, it won't be hard to figure out, as Michael pointed out, how much, what percentage we need to generate any given amount of revenue. So, if we're looking at that hundred and eighty thousand dollar figure, we can figure out the percentage increase. We can put it before you to authorize the, the next step, and, and you vote forward or you vote it down.
I just think we're going to have to stair step into it, I'm not sure we can make that all at once.
We, you, we had also talked about potentially asking what, what percentage of law enforcement that the county provides to the city, right? So, the city residents pay that share. I don't know if we ever did a lot of research to find that out, but the city residents are paying for protection to county officers. And I don't know if, because I know there are some city-county agreements where county officers patrol inside the city. I don't remember, we did a little research on that, I don't know, but if, if that could relieve some of the stress on, on the chief's department, I don't know if we ever got an answer on, on the cost sharing per se of having deputies, you know, participate in, in controlling some of our city streets.
I mean, if you're talking about contracting with the Sheriff's Department, I mean, they're already starting their officers by about an hour more than we are, so I don't see that as a cost benefit to the residents of the city if you're, if you're contracting that labor.
Right, I think that's the point, is that we should maybe stop.
But with the total cost of overhead on an employee, a city employee, as opposed to a contract wage for them to run, they, they already have that overhead, so I don't hope we ever did any numbers. It would be cheaper to hire an officer in and work extra hours, because they're, some of their benefits would already be paid. Does that make sense?
I think maybe, correct, correct me if I'm wrong, but what, what, I, I think you're saying, so I, as a, as a resident of the city, also as a resident of the county, pay tax dollars that go to support.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think you can do that.
Count, well, well, hold on. County police.
Correct.
My property downtown, there's not a lot of sheriff's cars driving by my house.
Right.
So, I'm paying for police protection that I'm really not using. Because I don't, I don't, my property, my family generally.
But it's a broader issue. You're not, you're not paying the tax to the sheriff's department, you're paying the tax for county services that they receive a portion of that tax money to fund the sheriff's department. I mean, it's no different than, than here. You know, we, we have the general tax that's not completely funding the police department, it's funding every department. I mean, we do get the benefit of them being here, because they house all of our prisoners for free.
So, so.
That's a huge, that's a huge benefit. Liability wise.
Sheriff's officers would come back and say, well, I, we need more money now, because you're going to be controlling city streets.
Right.
They're going to come back and say, our X amount budget is not big enough now, if you want us to do overlaps.
Right, and I, I'm not suggesting that we bring them in to, to do overlap.
Right. Because what the sheriff would likely say is, I have my deputies to patrol the county already. If you're needing me to patrol the city, I'm going to have to hire additional officers. And again, they start out at five dollars an hour more than we do. So, which you would have to pay for.
But with the, the total cost of an employee compared to just their salary, or their, their per hour cost, their, their hourly cost, I don't know if we were doing studies on that, it would be cheaper to contract out some services.
Which, that third, the third.
If we, if we were going to contract with the county for, like, uh, by contractual agreement, intergovernmental agreement with the county, the county's going to charge us the total cost of that employee, including their wages and benefits.
And benefits?
Yeah, they're going to insist that we pay the whole rate for that person, and they're going to calculate a rate based upon retirement, healthcare, all that stuff, it's going to be a higher hourly rate than just hiring a local. So, it really wouldn't make any sense to contract with, with an entity that pays better.
We have issues now when we're waiting on an ambulance to come from Wyngarden and Bloomsdale. I don't want to wait for our police staff to come from Wyngarden and Bloomsdale as well. I mean, that's, that's not acceptable.
So, is our, only two avenues is property tax or sales tax? That's it, nothing else?
Or, or restructure. Or budget, budget realignment, slicing the pie differently.
So, what is the, there was a cost differential, putting it on the one ballot versus the other?
It's free, it's free in April.
It's free in April, and it would cost how much if we put it on the?
It would share a portion of the cost based on some sort of formula.
Okay.
Of the total election.
Three or four thousand.
Okay. So, what do we want to do then?
Wait till April and get our pieces of news.
Get all of our facts and figures, forget.
Get all of our facts and figures together.
Can't wait till April. I think we do.
No, you have to wait until April, whatever the date is for the April election.
I mean, I think by then you'll have the property assessment's done, your total assessment is gonna be, you know, the property tax.
We can look at the budget, we will be looking at the budget, which may decrease the amount we need to ask for.
And then if I could quickly revisit the, the remodel project, I've gotten the drawings from Gary, I got them tonight. I have not been able to get any of the factor of dollar amounts on the, the city hall portion of that reconstruction. With the exception of this room, there won't be any major construction. If, if the board was in favor, I would propose removing this, these closets and the judge's chambers, widening this area and providing more space for the council up there and more chairs back here. So that would be the only major construction cost with that, the majority of the rest is just.
I have a problem with the closet, because we control that and we control the judge's chamber as well, but does he use that? I mean, is it, is it just there?
I mean, there's other spaces he can use.
Okay.
He uses it to put a robe on.
That's what he uses it for, to get dressed?
Right.
Can wait, he can wait in your office.
He can wait in my office.
So the, the, the majority of that would be just the remodeling cost as far as the carpet and drop.
Well, we're gonna drop the ceiling and change the lighting and.
Right.
Put it, and put in that foyer area.
You're gonna drop the ceiling?
Well, lower the ceilings and we're not heating all that cubic footage. Not in here.
Oh, not in here.
No, out there.
Oh, okay, I get it.
So, I mean, if, if, I, I've gotten the figures together for my portion, I've had those for, for some time now. You know, if the board is in favor or wants to look at capping the dollar amount for, for the remainder, maybe I can go and start putting things up a bit if, if everybody is in favor of that.
Well, I think it's something that needs to be done. I don't know how you guys feel.
How much are we talking about and how do we pay for it?
Probably gonna have to come out of the general fund.
No.
We're talking about.
I mean, capital improvement fund, yeah. Capital improvement fund.
Can you, my, my total was ninety-three for.
If I'm purchasing property, we're investing in this property.
No, but I'm asking. Ninety-three thousand?
Oh, I don't, purchase property? I'm, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, two conversations.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, it's not your fault, I just was listening to this.
I'm sorry. Let's redirect.
Okay.
The, the question that got, was raised, well, how are we gonna pay for this? And it would come out of our capital improvement fund.
And the money's there for that.
The money's there for that.
How does that, how does that affect the, the fire truck plan that we had agreed?
That money, that's even after that.
It's after that, yeah.
How much money we talking about total here?
My supplies on, on my portion are ninety-three thousand four hundred and thirty-two dollars and whatever the labor cost. That's, that's with the architect fee, which.
Which we decided.
Thousand dollars, so it would be in the eighties plus whatever the, the labor cost would be. And then, again, the supply cost for, for the city hall portion, which I would assume would be flooring, the drop ceiling, probably updated lighting.
You need to update the lighting.
Yeah, and then.
For some partition walls.
Yeah, some partition, partition walls. Again, there's no major construction other than, than this, and again, it's gonna be structurally sound anyways because this is.
You're basically moving the material.
That I can tell, so, and then the, the construction of the front thing, which again is not gonna affect the structure, it's not gonna be a bearing wall up there, so I can't imagine that being a tremendous cost. But if we could, if, if you were comfortable with some type of, or at least approving me to go ahead and put some of this stuff out for bid and get some, get some actual numbers and move forward.
Well, I mean, I, you really can't make a decision without actual numbers, so.
Right.
I hate to ask people to bid things, however, that you're not going to follow through on because they take their time and energy to put together a, a proposal, you know, so it's kind of a chicken and egg problem.
Right, but we know, we know how much the majority of this construction is going to be. If we can, if we can ballpark the rest and give you guys a, a ballpark what we, what we hope to come in under, would that, would that suffice?
So you have an idea on the labor?
I mean, the rule of thumb is usually double the supply cost, so.
Yeah, it's usually.
That's what I was told. I've never, I've never been involved in that.
But that's not my estimation, but.
What is your estimation?
About the same. About, no, about the same as the material.
Right, that's what he said.
Oh, you're talking about double the cost.
Right, right.
I thought you were talking about double on the cost.
No, I, I'm sorry, I didn't speak.
So for, for your portion, you're talking about a hundred and eighty?
Yes.
So the question I asked is, can you buy, can you buy property with capital improvement funds?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yes.
What do you wanna buy?
I know where he's going.
Maybe there's a facility out there that we could purchase for less than the cost of doing all this that would better suit your needs.
We looked at that at the one meeting and the cost to insure it, to heat it, like, all that stuff. I mean, yeah, we can afford to buy something if we need it to.
But then you're gonna have to redo it.
But then to support it, you know, to support it long term, we, we, the money would run out.
You're talking in addition to keeping this building?
Sure.
And I have run out of time, so, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. I'll, I'll.
Yeah, we'll.
Get back to you on this. I will get number two together.
Quick deal. Have about four minutes before our meeting starts. Can I call this meeting to order?
You can do that.
All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order and we'll stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd have a rule call.
Mayor Hassler.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Mooney.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Jokers, Alderman Jones.
Here.
Alderman Scoopy.
There.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Rizika.
Here.
Mayor, we have a forum.
Very good. I have a motion for approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Takes us down to Ms. Jeanette. Are you here for a personal appearance? Could you come to the podium, please?
It's that time of year again when River View's having their annual fireworks, Fourth of July party and everything. And I sent a letter to the city, but I also wanted to come for permission to do the fireworks like we've done for the last nine years now. And it probably will be the last year that we'll be able, well, I know it'll be the last year that we'll be able to use the property across from River View because by next year we'll have a water park there and everything, so.
Say we do it.
Second.
Is that on the consent agenda?
It's on the, isn't it?
No, I didn't put it, I mean, normally they just.
Move to approve the fireworks display.
I'm second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good, thank you.
You gentlemen are easy, thank you.
Brings us to Martin's report.
Okay, so with the able assistance of Cochran Engineering and Dave Van Leer, who's sitting back there in the light green shirt from Cochran, we received bids and on the, on the water tower. The low bidder was Phoenix Contracting, Phoenix. And the amount as, as reflected in the documentation you received in your packet was eight hundred and four thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars for a three hundred thousand gallon tank with legs, not the pedestal tank. Pedestal tank for all bidders was considerably higher. Kind of took it beyond the point of considering it as a, as a legitimate option. Two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollar difference. So, on your agenda tonight is, an ordinance approving the, awarding the contract and entering in, awarding the bid, entering into the contract with the, with the low bidder. Jokers, we, we've met a couple of times and they were planning to start, but the, the risers that we need to raise the utility boxes aren't coming in until Thursday of next week. And, and so Jokers is gonna start on the ninth for, for the paving projects.
On some of the projects we've done, the manhole covers were already like a couple inches below and we went, came across with a two inch overlay, but they only raised them two inches, so they're still two inches.
What ended up happening was they did a two and a half inch overlay and they had a two inch rise. That won't happen.
Okay, so we're making up for that.
This one at Knife and Ridgeway is already three inches lower than the pavement.
Yeah, no, that's not gonna happen. In the brighter green shirt, many of you know David Bova, who is back there in the audience. David's been hired as the community development administrator. And actually, come on up now to introduce yourself. He's only been here two days, but he's gonna talk about what he's three days now. And so talk a little bit about what he's found and accomplished in a short period of time he's been here.
Well, we started some training and learning on the job, thanks to Martin and Pam Sue and a bunch. What I've, we've talked about quite a bit of nuisances. I believe there were two hundred and sixteen photos passed on to me. There were actually two hundred and eleven properties. We examined them. Martin and I went around and looked at the first, what we consider the most unsafe fifteen. Out of those fifteen, five had already been repaired or remodeled. So there are ten properties that we'll be sending letters out to. I sent two out today because I need to quote the specific codes and violations. So I'll send the other eight out tomorrow. Beyond that, just learning. But thank you, very excited.
Welcome aboard.
Thanks, sir.
Supposed to have a meeting with CMO Regional Planning in the county today over community development block grants, but the CMO person didn't, didn't get here. I am of the opinion that community development block grants are available to low and moderate income communities and that the city has does, has not qualified. Although you can qualify by establishing kind of community development block grant areas, surveying the residents and determining their income. And if you can, you know, you can then apply for grants for those specific areas. On the other hand, there seems to be some thought that, that the city qualifies based overall on, on income. And we were gonna get that resolved today before this meeting and it didn't happen. But I'll have an answer before next week. The, there was a second person who's interested in considering developing the, the property on Progress Parkway. This company is interested in coming up with a plan for forty acres instead of just the residential portion and the mixed use. And, and so I made the information available to that person and we'll hopefully be hearing back from him. If not, I'll call him, say, what's up? Over the years, you know, we talked about getting grants for parks and this, this woman came to the Community Services Foundation meeting and said she had this program that was designed for doing grants for nonprofits, for finding grant opportunities for nonprofits. And so she said she would use her program while she had it. It was, she only had it for a limited period of time to, to search for, for park grant equipment opportunities. And I was not surprised to find out that she really didn't have, come up with any more information than we already knew. There are limited grants available for parks. None that are general, they, they target specific audiences. And there, there, there's one possibility that, that we will pursue. And it's, and, and so maybe, maybe that'll work out. But I didn't, I didn't end up getting a whole lot of information that I didn't already know. Kevin Parr from Missouri Public Risk was in today. Missouri Public Risk provides our workman's comp and liability insurance. They are, they are a very proactive organization. They don't audit, they come in and, and advise you. And, and he met with Gary and went through the shop and I think they're gonna set up another time where he can do kind of a more in-depth review of the cities. But, but we did discover that we're, we do certain things, we're eligible for a two percent credit. It's not a credit on our bill, it's actually a cash refund. So he's sent us the list of things, it's mostly training and education in certain areas. For instance, we have a, a policy in our personnel manual regarding sexual harassment, but we don't actually do training. And so, and, and they will provide the training. So, you know, if we start instituting some of these things, we can take advantage of that, that, that two percent refund. And I've done a lot of inspecting and change of occupancy inspections. But I did interview somebody who has an interest in taking the building inspector's job on a part-time basis. He's, in the past, has been certified as a building inspector. And, and I have an ad running in the paper, which I'm gonna let mature to see if I get any other candidates. But if I don't, I think I have someone who will come to work and who's qualified, so that would be a good thing.
Levy District anymore?
They, they chose not to do that.
Okay.
Basically couldn't justify sixteen hours, just the experience. Finally, I did, I informed you two weeks ago that I contracted with an appraiser to do an appraisal of a Tropen industrial park building. I hadn't heard from him until today, and he promised us to have that finished by, until August sixth. Any questions? Yes, sir.
As far as the developer and stuff out there on Progress Parkway and stuff, how does that work? Who owns the property? Do we?
Well, we own the property. The, the proposal that we made for subdivision development was that we would, we would deed the property for no cash payment, that they would have a note to the city, and that, that note can payable based on sales, so, and, and so we'd have a per lot release fee, say, whatever, three thousand dollars a lot. If you have twenty lots, we have six acres, we could get sixty thousand dollar payback on, on, on the lots, and so that would put the property, you know, at ten thousand dollars an acre, which is the appraised value on the property we had down the churches property when we were talking about extending Parkwood. So, but, you know, that, everything's on the table. I mean, any, any, any way they want to do it, I think if they're going to do something that enhances the value of the community, I think you would find a way to cooperate.
So basically, we own the property, they develop it, we get proceeds every time a lot is sold?
Yeah, we, we, we provide the incentive for the development by not demanding payment upfront.
So who controls the cost of the lots then?
Well, we have a contract, and they, they can sell them for whatever they want to sell them for, but they can't get clear title to them until we release our lien. They owe us however much we negotiate on a, on a per lot basis.
And this other deal you were talking about is in addition to that, or?
I was talking to this person about that, and he said, well, what about the rest of it? I said, what do you mean, what about the rest of it? He said, I'd be interested in looking at doing a master plan for the forty acres. I said, yeah, sure. He said, okay, well, let me, let me take it back and I'll think about it, have a better, got a week. And again, according to, kind of following Joe's point of view, the fact that it's zoned industrial doesn't preclude us from going through the steps of rezoning it. In this case, he rezoned it as a planned unit development because he would bring in the plan, and that plan would be approved, and so the, but it still would have to go to the planning commission and then the board for, for final approval.
And I just want to make sure I'm clear that mixed use is residential and retail combined? Is that what mixed use means?
Yes, yes. Residential, commercial.
Residential, commercial, combined, mixed, like ours, okay.
Or it can be single-family residential and multifamily residential, I mean, just.
Okay. Kind of all flavors. Okay. Good.
Questions? Takes us to our staff reports. Sandra, you're up first.
Welcome back. You have slides?
Unfortunately, I almost lost my voice, so this will be a brief report. Oh, I'm just going to hit some high points. In my stack of mail that I was reading through, our Missouri Division of Tourism grant came in, and this was for our FY nineteen grant application, and our amount from the state is going to be a little over four thousand dollars this year, which is up from last year, and this is a fifty percent matching grant, so our project is a little over eight thousand dollars on that. We also have an update, a received confirmation today that the Center for French Colonial Life will be reopened tomorrow, and Tours of the Bauduc and La Millure will be reopened this weekend as well, and that they will remain open on their regular schedule. This was also reported in this week's Herald. We had some question about the information that we had previously been provided as to which day it would actually open, but it is confirmed that it will be tomorrow. Some July events coming up that I want to just remind the Board of Aldermen about. Next week, obviously, is Fourth of July. There is a patriotic Fourth of July presentation each year downtown on, in the Courthouse area. This year, for the first time, it will be held indoors at the DeBerg Center, which I'm sure will be a welcome change for everyone. That takes place at noon on Wednesday, the Fourth of July, and I know you already know about the fireworks presentation in the evening, but not everyone knows about the patriotic Fourth presentations that are done at noon on the Fourth of July, and so just wanted to make sure that was out there. The St. Genevieve County Fair is coming up July eleventh, or excuse me, the twelfth through the fifteenth, and we have copies of the fair book down at the Welcome Center. If anyone is interested, I'll also leave one of these up here at City Hall. Moonlight Madness will be Wednesday, July eleventh. That's a shopping event downtown sponsored by St. Genevieve Downtown Renewal. The twenty-first and twenty-second is a traditional artisans event hosted by ASL Pewter, and then this Friday, this Fourth Friday of July, July twenty-seventh, will mark the tenth anniversary of the Fourth Friday Art Walks in St. Genevieve, and so there will be special activities taking place surrounding the July Art Walk. So if you haven't been to Art Walk in a while, that might be another good one to put on to your agenda, and I also provided copies for the Aldermen of the cover letter of the state's tourism grant approval letter for us. This has to be signed by the governor, but expectations are he's going to do that this week, so. And you also have in front of you a resolution for another grant application. This is to apply for assistance with the performance of live music in the downtown district and the historic district. We did this last year, and this is a grant application that's available through the St. Genevieve Muni Grant Program. The municipal band sponsors these. We did receive funds in this program last year, and so I'm asking for funds again this year. This helps us put musicians on the street corners on a couple of Saturdays during the summer. We also have people doing skills demonstrations and people walking around as greeters, just to create a little more ambiance and activity in the historic district, especially on the summer weekends, so, so that will be part of your discussions. That's all I have.
Questions? Thank you, Sandra.
Thank you.
Eric, you have a report for us? I've seen a lot of you today.
I don't really have much to report, so unless you have a question for me. We're gearing up for the fair also. We'll have the parade there, and don't really anticipate any, any major issues, so everything's going smoothly. We're still full staff, and we appreciate everything you guys do for us. Any questions?
Very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Takes us to committee reports. Joe, you have anything for planning and zoning? When do you expect you might have something, Joe?
Dave? Next meeting.
Well, I mean, there's no meeting next week. Next month.
Maybe, yeah, maybe it's.
Well, you have to keep that going, Joe. Any other committee reports? Been kind of slow, so. Yeah. It's hard to find a committee that would like to have Bob. I'm working on it, though, Bob.
Wow.
I think you're bleeding.
Takes us to public comments. Floor is open. If there's no public comments, it takes us to a public hearing. Okay, the public hearing will open at six nineteen.
Okay, the downtown redevelopment plan requires a public hearing and a report every five years on the progress of the, of the plan, and this, we're in the fifth year. The, so I'm going to kind of read this statement because those who might be viewing it didn't have the op, don't have the opportunity of seeing it, and, and then I'll open the floor for questions, actually have a comment or two after I read this. This is a public holding, hearing being held pursuant to the Real Property Tax Increment Allocation Redevelopment Act, known as the TIFF Act, in order to update the public on the progress of the downtown St. Genevieve TIFF. The purpose of the hearing is to evaluate the activity that has occurred within the redevelopment plan for this project. Downtown St. Genevieve TIFF was approved by the city on May ninth of 2013. This area includes approximately one hundred and fifty-seven acres and generally covers the downtown area with extensions out Market Street and South Fourth to include several properties accessed thereby. The first project envisioned by the redevelopment plan included the renovation of property at Nine North Main Street on the southeast corner of Main and Merchant, which was formerly the Hotel St. Genevieve. In addition, the plan provided for this and other eligible projects within the TIFF boundaries to recapture qualified costs by the city reimbursing the expenses from the increment created by the increased real estate taxes, and those are known as pilots, and sales taxes. That's known as ETS, Economic Activity Taxes. Pilots is payment in lieu of taxes. So those revenues that are earned above the base that was set in 2012 are eligible for, for reimbursement until the expiration of the TIFF in 2023. Following the city's approval of the redevelopment plan, Audubon Redevelopment LLC entered into an agreement with the city, which is a TIFF note, to recapture up to a million dollars of the work on the former hotel. Audubon submitted eligible expenses of one million three hundred and seventy-four thousand, six hundred and forty-three point six seven, so a note for a million dollars was issued to Audubon in June of 2015. In September of 2014, Thomas and Patricia Hooper, doing business as ASL Pewter, applied for TIFF financing for renovations at one eighty-three South Third Street. On October ninth, 2014, the Board of Aldermen approved the redevelopment agreement for ASL Pewter Redevelopment Project, authorizing the recapture of up to thirty-three thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars and sixteen cents. The Hoopers submitted evidence of twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars and seventy cents in eligible expenditures, and on May twenty-eighth, 2015, a note was issued to them by the city in that amount. State statutes require that a special allocation fund be established for a TIFF. When real estate tax revenue or sales tax revenue within the redevelopment area are generated above the level of 2012, an increment is created. A hundred percent of the increment from the real estate taxes and fifty percent of the increment from sales taxes is deposited in the fund. It is from this fund that payments on the notes are made. Downtown TIFF for St. Genevieve requires that the base year for both pilots and eats for the entire district must be met. That's unique. That's not a statutory requirement. It was a decision that the Board of Aldermen made when we approved the plan. So, so you have to meet, re, meet the real estate tax base and the sales tax base, and the pilots and the eats for the individual projects must be met before distribution can be made. So your project has to be producing an increment, and an increment for the entire district has, has to occur. The only distributions that have been made are to Audubon for seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars and eighty-one cents, and to ASL Pewter, one hundred and four dollars and five cents, and that was here before last. As of May fourteenth, 2018, the fund balance is one thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighty-one cents. The county collector collects and distributes the tax revenues. The 2012 base for the eats is forty-four thousand, four hundred and fifteen eighty-one, and for the pilot is five thousand, eight hundred and eight dollar, one hundred and twenty dollars. The 2017 figures for the eats is forty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty-sixty-four, so it exceeded the base. The twenty seventeen for the pilots is five million, four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty, so that base was not met. Since the base is not being met for pilots, no distributions are made. However, legal counsel has advised that since the base was executed, exceeded for the eats in 2017 by one thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighty-one cents, a distribution can be made on a pro rata basis for the project's contributions. If an individual business, businesses' sales tax receipts exceeded the base for a project, after three years of non-payment, the amount due is payable with interest once the funds are available in the special allocation fund. So, I will be making a distribution to Audubon and ASL based on the percentage of their contribution to the, the, the increment from the sales tax revenues, but as you can see, it's not substantial, and the reason it's not substantial is because the increment is for the entire district, and while Audubon may be going great guns and generating fifteen thousand dollars or something of tax revenues, another entity went out of business and has no tax revenues, and so the total doesn't go up enough for by the, the, the amount that is apparently being contributed by the two projects. You follow that? It took me a long time to figure that out. So the distributions are, are minor. The other problem is this, this real estate, and, and there is a person who's recently purchased a building in St. Genevieve who's talked to me and was planning on being here tonight, but I understand can't be here for uncontrollable reasons, to, to, to question whether the board would be interested in adj, in addressing it. There have been a number of properties in the downtown TIFF that have gone off the tax rolls, purchased by nonprofit entities, but were included as privately owned for profit when the TIFF was established, and so the bank building is a good example of that, of that. The DeBerg Center, well, actually, we knew about the DeBerg Center, so it wasn't included, but, and, and the TIFF was extended to pick up the built, this built, building, and which has since lost half of its value since 2012. So these structures in the TIFF are keeping the TIFF from satisfying the 2012 base and allowing for a distribution of, of, of revenues, the increment that is being created because they are there. This person was going to ask that we consider amending the TIFF to remove the properties that have either gone off the tax rolls or are dragging it down. It, I've conferred with Gilmore Bell, the bond counsel, they said that can be done, but you're basically just kind of recreating the TIFF. You've got to appoint a TIFF commission, you've got to have the hearings, you can have your meetings and go through the whole process again, which can, and, and you could modify the TIFF boundaries to get it kind of back on track, and, and he was going to inquire as to whether you're interested in pursuing something like that. He's not here. I'm reluctant to speak for him, but I thought I better give you the info, I should give you the information. That concludes my report. Now, it is a public hearing, so you should hear from the public that wants to speak.
That's right. Is there anybody from the public that wants to speak on this issue?
Joe Steiger, five hundred and eleven. I just had some questions about that.
You know, if you, we're going to run into that same issue, right? So we, we, we didn't have a crystal ball to know what was going to happen five years from now, so if we go through this exercise, spend this money and redo the TIFF, we want to try to give all those businesses the best chance that we can, but we're going to run into this again five years down the road. We, we just, we don't have the booming economy that, that these TIFFs normally create, so I just want you guys to keep that in mind. It's just more of a comment and, and a question about, you know, how your five-year crystal ball is looking for, for future development of the TIFF. We want, the ones that participated in it now, we want to thank them, but I, I don't know if it's really going to be feasible or see a lot of growth going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
This is, I was going to say, this TIFF is somewhat unique. You, you read a lot about TIFFs, and they're kind of done for specific projects, and so bonds are issued, debt is incurred, money is invested in the sewer and water. are issued, debt is incurred, money is invested in sewer and water and roads, and then the debt is paid off from the revenues of the TIF. In this case, we didn't incur any debt. We just created a structure that would allow private property owners using their own means to improve their property and have a hope of recapturing some portion of that through, through the TIF revenues. And it was kind of a, provided the incentive and hoped good things happened. Some, a couple of good things have happened, but Joe's right, it hasn't really taken off. Mike?
Hi, good evening, gentlemen. Mike Fowler. One of the, one of the things that I think is very interesting about, about the uniqueness of our community having a, having a, what I think is a luxury of a, of a TIF district in our historic district. Back in, back in the 2009, 10 timeframe, a study was done to determine the feasibility of a blighted area and create a TIF. Three years following that, approximately three years following that, through, through a lot of war, hard work, different committees, the TIF was established. And while the, while the initial project of the Audubon, you know, may or, may or may not have be what everyone thought it was going to be, as, as Mr. Tolman indicated, it's really more of what is, what is the, what is the community or the businesses in that district, how are they all contributing and generating that makes this successful? And one of the things I guess that I question is, is the marketability or the marketing that has or has not taken place for that, what I consider a huge carrot in our community. A lot of people have worked extremely hard, for instance, over the years to get the National Park to, to come to town. The levy district, you know, whatever the number was, 15 million, whatever, back in the 95 timeframe, the, when, when the feds decided that this community was important enough to, to put in a levy. Usually federal levies are put in to protect an industry, and we know that it was put in and the money was spent, in this case, to protect our great historic downtown area. So the levy goes in, the study goes, takes, takes place to, to put this National Park in, and we are on the cuffs of, of great things, I really believe, in, in this community, and we have to keep pushing it and shoving it and promoting it. The TIF is, to me, a huge carrot for potential folks to come in and invest in our community. And I just question what has been done and what is being done to promote that? I challenge you all to, to, to take that step and, and please, you know, there's, there are folks that have been investing. Do they even know about it? Do they understand it? Do they know what, what could be out there? Because it is very unique, it's completely different than the TIF that was designed and set forth up in the, up in the industrial park area. You know, there was some money there for, for generating, you know, potential grants upfront, and, and this one is not like that, or it hasn't been to this point. And one of the reasons why is because it hasn't generated enough, it hasn't met that base. So the funds, the benefit of this one have been for, for somebody or an organization to put their money forward, develop something like this awesome Pewter shop that we have down here, and then they, they reap some benefit from their own generation of taxes and funds. So I just leave you, well, I have, I do have one question. Martin, do you know, so if, if the TIF was amended and it went back into committee to reestablish boundaries and maybe take some of those nonprofit buildings off of that, out of the district, right? Do you have an estimate of what that would cost? Legal fees and roughly what, what?
No, I mean, I haven't been quoted a figure.
Okay.
There would be legal fees because.
Sure, there would be. So.
The original TIF was a little more expensive because we had to pay for the creation of all the data.
Right.
We don't have to go through that.
And that's what I was getting ready to get at was, the original, the original one was pretty expensive. I don't remember the number off the top of my head, but it was pretty expensive. So I really think it is worth, at least worth taking a look at and saying, what, what do, what do we think needs to be done, and how much time, effort, and obviously expense would it take? And how, how much quicker do we think we might be able to make that base, that TIF base, if we remove those properties? So I don't think it's as easy as, in five years, we're going to just be doing this again. We have to at least, I think, take a look at the difference between, is it worth it? If we've removed those various properties.
We would have made.
Lower that base.
We would have made the base.
I'm sorry?
If, without those properties, the, the 2012 base would have been exceeded.
I, I think it's worth looking at, and I also think it's worth promoting. It's something very special in our downtown and.
And in terms of cost, I, no, I'm just pulling a figure out of the air.
Right, yeah. And I didn't, I didn't really expect you to have one, but I'm just saying, it isn't likely we're developing a new one, so.
Yes, it'd be a lot cheaper.
I don't disagree with Mike, and I think Mike's got a valid point, but the question is, when, once you take those properties out, we went down the road and set back to economic development, I think we went blighted. And so do we still qualify? Because some of those properties we have increase the values, and I don't.
Actually, we did what's called a conservation TIF, so it, I don't think it was blighted. I think it was for conservating the value of the properties.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll look at it.
I thought it was more blighted path as well, but. Are you confident that that's?
No.
There was two different ways that we could do it, or three different ways, and then I thought.
I think you can do economic development, conservation, and blight. I thought we were talking about conservation, but maybe we went, we went the other way.
So I'll finish with, I think that this, I think that, that the TIF could be a snow, has a, has a great potential to have the snowball effect, okay? If you bring in some potential big developers, are, you know, are we promoting it in different areas of the country? Are we promoting it out of the city? Have, have developers, potential developers been contacted? If you do that, you get on this, you get on this steamrolling machine and you're generating that tax, so that the base is met quicker and you're able to, and everybody benefits. So please consider more promoting, promotion of that, of that carrot that I call it out there, if you would. Thanks.
Any questions?
So many properties have we taken out?
Took the Commandant's House, or I forget the name of that.
John Baptiste.
The Bank, the house around the corner here on South Gavri. The Pork Center wasn't in it. Yeah, those are the ones, but the big ones, the, the big one is, is still in private ownership, but has devalued, and that's, that's the loose and bill.
Joe, you got any questions? No. To close the meeting, the public hearing at 6:38. Thank you very much. Takes us to the dissent agenda. Motion to approve.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Very good. Takes us to old business. Bill number, second reading of Bill number 4225, An Ordnance of the City of St. Genevieve Adding Section 408, Continuing Education in Section 714, Firearms to the St. Genevieve Personnel Manual is set forth below.
Motion to approve.
Second. Very good. I'd like to have a roll call vote.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Mooney.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Alderman Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Rozicka.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill number 4225 now becomes ordinance 4156.
Takes us to new business. Bill number 4221, An Ordnance Authorizing the Mayor to Enter Into an Intergovernmental Agreement with the St. Genevieve County for the Progress Parkway Water Tower Construction. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion, have a second reading?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So that would takes Bill number 4221, An Ordnance Authorizing the Mayor to Enter Into an Intergovernmental Agreement with the St. Genevieve County for the Progress Parkway Water Tower Construction.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Rozicka.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Mooney.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill number 4221 now becomes ordinance 4157.
Thank you. Bill number 4226, An Ordnance Entering to an Agreement with Phoenix Fabricators and Erectors LLC for the construction of a 300,000-gallon multi-leg elevated storage tank on Progress Parkway in an amount not to exceed $804,260. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion for second reading?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second reading on Bill number 4226, An Ordnance Entering to Agreement with the Phoenix Fabricators and Erectors LLC for the construction of a 300,000-gallon multi-leg elevated storage tank on Progress Parkway in an amount not to exceed $804,260. Motion to approve.
Second.
A roll call vote, please.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Alderman Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Rozicka.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Mooney.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill number 4226 now becomes ordinance 4158.
Takes us to Bill number 4227, An Ordnance Authorizing the Mayor to Enter Into a Lease Purchase Agreement with Missouri Valley Bank, MRV, in St. Genevieve County for the funding of the Progress Parkway Water Tower.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion for a second reading?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bill number 4227, An Ordnance Authorizing the Mayor to Enter Into a Lease Purchase Agreement with the Missouri Valley Bank, MRV, in St. Genevieve County for the funding of the Progress Parkway Water Tower.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Mooney.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Rozicka.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill number 4227 now becomes ordinance 4159.
Thank you very much. Any other business? Any other communication? There's no other business or no other communications during this meeting.